Ready? Nope. Okay. Adjustments to the agenda, I have two. Under other committees, the 5.6, one of the things that was omitted from the reports to the board was the student council report. So that at 5.6 we'll be doing the student council report. The other adjustment I have is to add 7.2. And that is about the NEAS, the New England Association of School.
Association of Schools.
We are going to have a short discussion and a vote on that if the board feels good about voting on it at this time. Those are the only two adjustments I have to the agenda. Does anyone have anything else? Nope.
Can we just ask?
Sure.
The leave of absence request, could we just pull those out of the consent agenda just so I can understand? I don't understand right now how it's, how those people currently are split here.
And that's a really good question because that happened in our meeting at the CSSU level. And so, we will pull out 8.5.1 through 8.5.5, and we'll put them as 7.3. And we'll discuss those right there. And then have a motion to vote on them afterwards, okay?
That'd be great. Thank you.
I know, that was a little confusing to me, too. So we have taken out 8.5.1 through 8.5.5, and put it at 7.3. Anything else? Audience and communications, these must be all our international students over here. Do I have any other things from the audience that need to be addressed to the board? Nope. Excellent. We are going on to 4.0. And specifically 4.1, our presentation from our international students. Come on up. This is a great time of the year, listening to our students, international students.
So, I'm John Garg. For those of you who don't know me, I work for the EF High School Exchange Year. And I'm not sure if the packs will come along or not, but hopefully they will come along. This is my first year, I think, that my students have been here to talk to you, give you their impressions of the year, and mostly to say thank you. So, on top of what we are about today, we give the kids a little bit of a chance to see if the others come. So we'll start out, we have a quick little presentation. Polly, if you and Adam would come up, would you appreciate it?
Oh, yeah, shouldn't I read it?
Yeah, I haven't.
Can I just start?
Yep.
Well. The EF High School Exchange Year Global Education Excellence Award is presented annually to high schools that demonstrate an extraordinary commitment to international understanding and global awareness. Champlain Valley Union High School was one of the select, inner select group of high school and districts recognized across the country throughout the 2015-2016 school year. CBU has shown an outstanding commitment to offering global education by welcoming exchange students such as myself, Frederick, and Manuel into the classrooms. CBU has created a new and unique learning opportunity, not just for exchange students, but for American students and facility as well. This year's CBU has welcomed three EF exchange students, which bring the total number of EF exchange students who have attended CBU over the past 25 years to more than 90 students from all over the world. Not only were the students accepted, they were, they became an integral part of the academic and extracurricular life, involving the community at large and the exchange experience. With this outstanding record, CBU has been instrumental, has been instrumental in supporting a priority United States foreign policy goal of expanding communications between US citizens and people from other countries. Throughout their long association with EF, CBU has displayed an admirable dedication to promoting international understanding and global education throughout the school year. We proudly recognize Champlain Valley for their remarkable commitment to international exchange, and we thank CBU for welcoming this year's exchange students such as myself. The community and visiting students share an unforgettable experience thanks to the generosity of CBU administration, teachers, students, and family. So, I'm gonna hand this to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys are getting out, right?
You all get together real quick.
After we're done hugging.
Sure, why not? You know what, I should hold the award. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, not only gotten the formalities out of the way, I'd like to introduce the kids and have them talk a little bit about who they are, who they're staying with, and others who are present on. Frederick, do we want to start with you?
Sure. My name is Frederick, I'm from Norway, and I've been here for all of the school year. To me, this whole experience has been something very novel, and something that's given me a lot of insight in American culture, but also in myself. And it's been thanks to all the great people here at CBU and in the community in general that I've been able to have this great experience, so for that, I'm very thankful.
So, my name is Manuel, I'm from Austria. I've been here since January. I have another whole school year, which in hindsight I wish I had done because it's just been an amazing experience for me here. I'm staying with the wonderful Sweeney family. Yeah, what can I say, it's been really amazing. I mean, Jan was telling me that, like, the CBU used to have a faculty exchange, and Austrian teachers came here and they were really baffled that CBU is basically a fun place. Yeah, I mean, I've got the same experience, like, learning is fun. That really surprised me. Yeah, I guess I was really thankful for that.
Well, going off of what they said. My name is Niels, and I'm from Denmark. I live with the McClellan family. Alice is sitting over there, looking beautiful. Something that I've learned throughout this year is something that I kind of realize now that Frederick said that he got an insight into himself, as well as the education. First of all, that the education here is actually fun compared to most European schools, which is very harsh, very, if you fall behind, you're left alone behind. And here, it's more of a, if you fall behind, everyone's gonna help you get up again, which is something that I feel we should put into our schools at home, which is something that I appreciate a lot. But, I've also been able to participate in stuff like cross-country running or track and field, which is something we don't have in my country, I don't know about you guys, we don't have it. And it's something that I've learned a lot from, not other than I've became a better runner. Like, I wasn't a good runner before, now I'm pretty decent, I would say. But, one thing that's other than running is the classes that you guys can give us, such as public speaking, is a class that I'm taking right now, and this is good practice for, because I have a speech tomorrow. And, those kind of classes, we don't have those at home. So, when, when we're at school, we're just, they expect us to learn the material, and then just take a test, and then do great, and then go on. Here we, they teach us how to, how to speak in front of people, which is something that I'm never gonna forget, and I'm gonna take with me the rest of my life, and that's thanks to all of you guys, and I'm wanting all the students for being such amazing people. And it's something that I'll never forget, and I'll never forget my time in Vermont, especially, I was first going to the inner city of Detroit, so I feel like Vermont is a little bit better. But I just wanna say thank you for welcoming me and other foreign people.
Anything that you'd like to add? Or any questions? So we do appreciate that, and we do realize that it is the generosity of the school board and the school and the administration that makes this possible. And it has been a privilege to be working with CBU these many long years. Our first student graduated from CBU in 1991, '92, and we were happy enough to be able to have him come and visit us last Thursday. He was working in Montreal and called and said, "Hey, can I come down?" You know? So he was in the house for a total of 14 hours, you know, five or six of that asleep. But, it was great to see him, and we're hoping that that will just be the first of many opportunities for him to come and work with this business in Canada so that we will be able to see him again. So the relationships are long-lasting, they are, I think monumental and helping to make the world seem like a little smaller place. So, we do appreciate the opportunity to have students here, and certainly if anyone has an extra room, we are always looking for host families. So, thank you very much for having us.
Thank you. Next is 4.2, innovations.
That's me. If we could have our think tank group come on in from the center. Last summer, we had projected that there would be some innovations discussed at this meeting after a whole school year. And, in touring around with the ideas of how to convey some of that innovation, I played around with, should we do another PowerPoint, should we do another presentation? And then I decided that the real important innovation often isn't in the structures, but it's in how we treat one another, function, our beliefs, how we conduct ourselves in this community. And, so instead of just telling you about structural changes or anything along those lines, I felt like it was more important to show you, I think what I would call an RVI innovation that happened this year beyond my control, certainly. And that is the group think tank. And why don't we just go around and introduce ourselves, and then I'll tell you more about the group.
My name is Taya Liebkevo, I'm from Williston, and I'm a junior this year at CBU.
Hi, my name is Elise Askew, I'm from Charlotte, and I'm a junior at CBU.
I'm Maddie Collins, I'm from Williston, and I'm a junior.
My name's Gabrielle Wood, I'm a junior, and I live in Shelburne. And Taya actually founded the club.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Kaplan, I'm from Williston, and I'm a junior.
I'm Vernon Chipland, from Heinzberg, and I'm a junior.
I'm Eva Rushlow, I am from Williston, and I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Paige Tebow, I live in Charlotte, and I'm a freshman.
So this is our think tank, or we may as well give them a round of applause before they begin. So, I heard a couple months ago that this group had gotten together and were talking about school and what they wanted, and their excitement about various innovations throughout the year, and also their even frustration, I think, at times with the system. And I attended one meeting and walked in, I was like, "Oh, yes, this is a group we need to get in front of the school board." So, I gave them two, basically two simple questions to talk about. The first question is, what innovation most excites you? And then the second question is, what does CBU need to do to meet the needs of learners in the 21st century? Depending on how that discussion goes, at the very end, I'm gonna have this group do a text analysis. So I'm gonna present them with two versions, well, our current graduation policy, and then a proposed graduation policy, and have them discuss this, to prep you for a discussion that you're gonna have later around the same documents. So I'm gonna step aside, if you wanna talk about the group, go ahead, do whatever you need to do, I'm just gonna get out of your way.
Okay. So I guess I should tell you a little bit about what a normal meeting for us looks like. In all, there's probably about 15 of us, and we get together on Tuesday mornings for about either 30 to 45 minutes. And, we always have some sort of idea that starts a conversation, and we sit normally like this. It's very comfortable, very casual, really open. And we try to just choose a topic that's very, very large, very open and broad, and single down to one point where we can leave the meeting feeling like we have a better sense of understanding about what we came in here being a little bit confused about. And so what we're gonna do today is just show you how one of our open discussion flows, and just get some thoughts out there, and then at the end, if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask. So for the first one, I know for dinner for us before we were talking about innovation in general, is there a way that you guys wanna define innovation, in life or in school?
I think that innovation is something that can help change, help like, grow, and just better a current system.
Innovation is creativity, it's change.
Yeah, first thing that comes to my mind is like, progress in some way.
I think, yeah, what comes to mind is like, by the people, for the people. So usually when there's an innovation, it consists of problem or frustration, so it kind of comes out of the crowd.
Interesting point with that, Eve and I just went to a conference with Mr. Bunting and Emily, and our presentation, though we're not really sure what it was completely about, I think it mostly came down to, how do we change, how do we make transitions less painful at CBU? Because we know that we had a very difficult transition period over the past couple of years with the change to standard-based grading and things like that. And we were definitely talking a lot about, what can you do in your school to make it less painful to go through that? And our solution was involve the students. And I think the biggest thing that excites me about innovation is that in the future at CBU, any innovation that happens is gonna have to come from the students. Because, once we realize that school is a place by the students, for the students, with the students, then we'll have a place where real education can happen.
I think innovation is a mindset, and it spreads, but it has to start with people who aren't worried about what the norm thinks. You have to start being comfortable, yeah, you have to start being comfortable with that idea of, I have an idea, it may go against what people believe, what people think, but in order to see change, we may have to go about it in some sort of alternative, kind of organic, different way that people wouldn't think of. And maybe that brings some kind of opinion on yourself, but you need to, I think it's a mindset of, if you can't do good for yourself, be able to put aside your fears and do good for the whole as a community.
Yeah, and I think the whole idea of innovation is, you know, recognizing something inside of yourself, but also recognizing it in all of those around you. And like you said, you have to have a fear of change, because it's edgy, you know, innovation is something new, it's something different, and we're all kind of more comfortable with what we're familiar with. But if we really wanna have an educational system and a community where we're all comfortable to be ourselves and to expand on what inspires us, I think that recognizing the fear of change is important in order to be able to overcome it as well.
Yeah, and I think that we've kind of talked a little bit about why we're so afraid of change, and like, why when all these changes happen, that everyone kind of has this automatic reaction of like, "Oh, I don't like that, like, I don't wanna go there, like, I just want things to stay the same." And I think that that kind of comes from this fear of, you know how it works right now, and you think that it's benefiting you, and you can't really step outside of that and say, "Well, will something be better?" And so you have to get in that mindset of, yes, like, there are ways that we can improve.
And I think that innovation is the product of long-term thinkers, and people who say, "Okay, what we have in this moment is good, and it's working, but what's gonna be more efficient, what's gonna be more effective, and what's gonna be all-inclusive?" And so, in order to really be innovative, you have to think about the long run and pushing through. Yes, it's hard right now, yes, everybody hates this current change that confuses everyone, but in the long run, is it gonna be better for everyone?
Thinking back to a quote, I think it goes something like, "Don't fear that a small group of dedicated people can't make a difference, because they are the only ones who ever have." And I think that the people who believe in standards-based learning right now, the people that believe in innovation, yes, they're a small group of people, but that's gonna grow. And the only changes that have ever happened are coming from a small group of people. If you think back to the civil rights movement, you know, if you think back to education reforms, if you think back to almost anything, it all starts with typically the younger generation, or people who care a lot. And, you know, they, they want to fit in, but they don't, and they use that, and they use it for change and for innovation. And if we were always okay with just what we have, then we would never progress, we would never progress within ourselves, within our, within our groups, with our families, or in our world.
Kind of rushing off of that, too. So I went to a thing recently, and I was a part of a panel where we were talking to middle schoolers, and one of the middle schoolers asked the question of like, you know, if I wanted to start kind of like a GSTA in our school, how would I make that happen? And so, you know, we all kind of threw out the idea of like, we'll get a couple of friends who sort of feel the same way you do, who are really excited about it, and then go to a teacher, and like, but what if, you know, the teachers don't like the idea, or they don't wanna do it, like, what if we can't get past that? And, you know, we all kind of were just like, you'll find somebody. So it's also sort of a thing of like, you have to, kind of like what Taya said, you have to find the mindset, and like, the mindset sort of starts with people in the community in like a small group, like, usually it's just a couple people. Like, Taya basically started this group just by being like, "Hey, I wanna talk about things." And people are like, "I like things."
Yeah, I think it's so natural, too, like, it's so, Tuesday mornings, like, I know it's a, it's a norm for us to just come in.
It's like a therapy.
It's a therapy. Because we feel things, we're like a group of people who feels things so intensely, like, we want change and not just for ourselves anymore. Like, I think at the beginning, it was like, what are we doing in the school system? Like, we feel like we're so in it, but something's wrong, and we recognized it, but now we don't want change for just ourselves, we want it for everyone, because like, learning is so natural to us, and knowledge, and being able to experience life and education for us is like, just a universal value that we have. And I, I think that there's other people out there, and that's kind of what we've been striving for this year, and finding like a group of people who can kind of build off of each other and learn from each other. It just has built into this perfect idea of how we can move forward now.
Kind of because of that, we started to sort of build that community that wasn't there previously.
Right.
And we've also started to pull in people who are like the faculty, like, we got Bunting. Yeah, so like, you know, we, it started kind of just from you being like, let's do this thing, and then even then, not really knowing, and then it grew into, we have this idea, we have this belief, we have this feeling, and then, you know, we got people behind us, which was what I was kind of trying to say to this middle school kid, which was crazy because it's like, that's something that's happening for them at such a much younger age. Like, that's just ridiculous to think about, but it's also there. So it's like, because the community is starting somewhere, is sort of branching off, you know, the younger generation's starting to feel this, so it's starting to sort of pick up speed.
Yeah.
Which is like, you know, really important, so I guess that's sort of like really exciting.
I was just, I was just reading some Thoreau the other day, and there was this one quote that I remember. And it was just like, you know, "If you have castles built in the, in the air, it's not a waste to just put foundations under them." And I just loved that. Like, I'm like, wow, like, that just explained, or that just justified all the thinking I do every day. It's like, well, I put this all up here, and then it's like, well, sometimes I don't share it, which you might find surprising, but sometimes I do. And I'm like, well, gee, that was a waste of like, two hours of me just sitting and like, could've been doing something else. But, if you really think about it, some ideas just need time to develop, and you need to, you can't think of anything as a waste, you know? And just brings me back, brings me back to that idea like, of innovation. And, any innovation or thought isn't wasted, you know, you can find ways to connect almost anything, like Thoreau and Major American Wentz, you know, a topic about innovation.
That's like, we look at it as a question.
Oh!
Well, I was gonna say, what's really unique about our little group is that I think we have these huge, huge ideas we talk about every day. And back to what Caitlin said about long-term thinkers, is that the stuff we're talking about probably isn't gonna benefit us in any real way by the end of our high school careers. But, where, I think where we kind of run into problems, or I guess stuck points, is where we're trying to look to generations behind us, or younger thinkers, and I think Paige has helped us with that. But I think that's kind of where we run into stuck points, if we can get into the second question.
So, kind of maybe to tie this into the second question here, I think that one of the reasons that we're talking about how we've been successful in like, engaging with the faculty, is that we're thinking really about how the future of CBU is so extensive, and there's so many different ways that this school will progress and will change to benefit so many different types of students and different types of learners, the same way that it has changed since it was first created, like, to benefit us where we are now. So, I think like, the biggest thing for CBU to do to grow, to meet the needs of like newer learners, is to continue to grow with those learners.
And I think that something that CBU could really expand upon is really handing education to the students. And I like, get so frustrated in freshman core because it feels like they're trying so hard to hand this opportunity to us to like, "Oh, do something different." But, the whole structure behind it is they make it so much easier to just go in the rut and do what everyone else is doing, and do whatever is most streamlined and mainstream. And, you know, it's so hard to do your own thing and like innovate your own learning because the whole mindset around education is still in the rut of, this is the most effective way, is to fill out a PowerPoint and do a list, you know? Instead, I wanna write music for it, you know, which is not as easy, but that's what I wanna do, you know? So I think CBU can really work towards embracing creativity and embracing different little paths that you could go on.
I think, I say.
I think it also kind of really goes into the communication that can happen between teachers and students as well. I've sort of found especially within this year, that with the teachers that I feel I can communicate with, a lot of the work that I do in that class, I'm way more interested in, and that I end up doing a lot that I feel more confident in. Like, you know, in my creative writing class, which I, it's creative writing, but like, we got to write short stories, and everyone in that class, because the community in that class is so relaxed, and because the teacher is so easy to talk to for most of us, and that class is based around sort of conferencing and sort of just constantly talking and working with each other, a lot of us felt comfortable with actually writing what we wanted to write, and actually learning how to write a short story, instead of just saying, "Oh no, like, Lassie has to go find the kid that fell in the well again." Like, you know, writing just the same stories over and over again that you've been writing since like, great, like, we kind of drifted away from that. Like, we kind of drifted away from that. And granted, that class, it's still like, here's a prompt or here's some basic information. You know, this is how drama, this is what it is. But then after that, it's write your own play. Like, they just leave it at that. But like, opposite of that, you know, in other classes, it's like, you know, make a presentation, it has to have all of these things, it has to be about this, you have to have it be this long. And it's just like, with certain teachers I can't communicate with, I shut down. And it's not because I don't like the topic, it's because I can't figure out how to work in that class for myself.
Something I keep thinking of, everybody who keeps talking is a tagline that we, I think we picked up during our chalk silent marker talk. Our silent marker talk was, like, don't let school ruin your education. And I think that's really, yeah, yeah, don't let school get away of your education. And I think that I've really kind of kept that in mind, I think, every day that I've sensed that day. It's like, yeah, something might not be working for you, but like, we're innovative thinkers, like, don't let a teacher not understanding that you need to be creative or that you need to express yourself through, you know, like bio. Like, don't let that, don't let that ruin education for you.
I think that comes back to, I think that comes back to like a key part of this question and a key thing that we have repeated over and over since we started meeting, which is the needs of learners in the 21st century and how much education has changed and how much going to college doesn't mean what it used to mean. And just going and studying something, like, you need to be passionate about what you want. There are so many different avenues and so many different like job opportunities that just weren't necessarily there before the 20s, 21st century. And also just so many things that we don't even know we have as opportunities. So it's hard when you feel like you're boxed into a bio class when you don't necessarily have any passion for bio.
Like, with this second question, so we were talking about what CDU, CDU needs to do to meet the needs of learners, but what if we just think about what CDU needs to do to meet the learners? Like, to physically like meet, meet them, like see them. Hard with people who just naturally crave to learn and like explore things and are curious about things and are passionate about things because this year is the first year that I've like felt like so excited to just branch out and connect things. And my classes are starting to come together and my teachers, the things that they're saying are sticking to things that other people are saying. And like, even books that I'm reading or shows that I'm watching, like, things are starting to come together. And that's been, just like with talking with you guys, I'm learning to let go of my obligation to be school all the time, to be this educated student. Like, I need to be able to be myself and live or else none of the things in the school are going to connect and stay with me, you know? Like, you have to find a way to ground them with yourself.
I think that's a really important point, but I'd like to talk about Paige. Because Paige is so cool. She's a freshman this year, and she just comes, comes on scampering into Think Tank. And like, I, like, I like things too. I want to talk about them. It's just like, um, and Paige, it might also be noteworthy to say that Paige is afraid of boxes. She's afraid of boxes. Like, when she sees boxes on her paper, she won't do the homework. And I wouldn't, I would say Paige is one of the most intelligent people I know.
Ever, ever. But she was just silent for three, four days, completely silent for people who cannot speak. And she chose to do this with her one other friend. It wasn't like a school-wide movement. There had been one before. She chose this by herself for four days. She didn't even speak to her family.
And like, that, that's something so valuable. I think that's what high school is really about, is like, learning who you are, not necessarily training. And I think that somebody always brings this up, yeah. Brings up this idea that school, schools become more training for a job that you, you know, most likely doesn't even exist yet. What's the, what's the statistic? Forty-five percent, sixty-five percent? Who knows? Like, the majority of the jobs that we're going to have aren't being invented yet. So why are we training for specific jobs in school when we have no idea what these jobs are going to be? And why are we allowing people to try, like adults, trying to tell us what our future is going to be like when they don't even know?
And that's what was so cool to me going to Think Tank for the first time. Because I remember just sitting there and being like hit by all of this emotion and passion. And I was like, electricity was coursing through my body and my mind. I was like, this is what school should feel like. And I went back to my core classes and I just couldn't stop thinking about it. I was like, Gabby and Taya and all these people, like, they're my people, they're my family. You know, I found my last species of twin. It's so, but like what you're talking about, it's kind of sad. Like, Tuesday mornings, like, we work in the annex, so we're away from the school. And we're like in this little bubble of like immense creativity and like so passionate thinking. And then we like walk back into school, and then I'm just like hit again. I'm like, what? Like, where am I?
It really wakes you up. You're like, I don't want this.
I walked to the wrong class today. Not even joking. I haven't done that all year. We must have had an awesome discussion.
It was good.
But it's like, how do you kind of get that to the rest of the school? Because I feel like,
We're definitely not the only people who feel that way.
And like listening to the exchange students talking about their experiences here versus their experiences there, a lot of what they brought up was really interesting, especially because they were like, you know, the most important thing to me was like being able to public speak, which is something that they don't even teach where I'm from and like that type of stuff. Where for us, it's like, we have the opportunity, but we're still sort of pushing for like more communication and for sort of this more open environment. So it was like, you know, but that was the thing that stuck out the most for him at least, was like, you know, that moment to be able to learn something that was more practical. And it's like, I feel like a lot of kids in school, because they're saying how like certain kids, if you fall behind, they don't help you out. I feel like that still happens here, but it happens more like emotionally than it does like grade-wise.
And I don't believe, like, I do not believe that there are kids in this school who just don't want to learn and just like, I don't think that that's the case. I really don't. I think it's that people get overwhelmed by the idea that they have to learn everything. There's, everyone wants to learn something, it's just not always in the textbook. And it's hard because some kids get really overwhelmed by the idea that they need to do really, really well in every specific subject area, and they lose track of the idea that learning is about finding out how to do something that you want to do, whether that be a practical skill or like a really intense AP class.
Yeah, there's definitely a piece of everybody.
Yeah, you find yourself.
We're designed to learn. Like, our adolescents are, you know, made to learn. And bring up another quote. Education isn't like filling a bucket, it's like lighting a fire. And that's such an important idea. You don't have a bucket where you can just toss all your knowledge. This is how much you can learn. Try to learn as much of it as you can.
They keep compressing it down.
You know, keep on tossing, kindling in the fire, you know? Like, if you want to learn more, learn more. Your fire will grow. It'll burn brighter. You know, like, education has to come from you wanting it. You can't just, you could talk at me all day and I could choose not to listen. I could choose to sleep. I, but you know, if you, but if it comes from me, like, I'm, I'll learn it. You know, I'll, I'll remember quotes from Thoreau so I can talk about it with you.
I mean, I think going right back, like a short answer to the question, what does CDU need to do to meet the needs of learners? Just put learning in the hands of learners. Like, that's, it's not that hard. Just give the learning to, like, let them have control of it because once you have control of your own learning, you can go anywhere.
And this probably sounds really like, I don't know how it would sound, but all I really want like out of my education is to be able to express ideas with teachers and like form connections with teachers. Because I know that like my teachers aren't just people who sit there and grade my papers. I know that they like see something in what I write. And like, that's why things where I'm expressing my feelings and giving them to people, like, that is some really, really like personal ideas that you're putting on a page. And giving that to teachers, I don't know if students don't recognize it or if teachers don't recognize the power of that. That, like, giving a little part of you to someone to be able to read and critique like really opens up a connection between two people. And I think like, I wish the first day of school was like a big camp reunion. Like, it's not just the teachers that, it's not just the students that you miss. Like, you missed your teachers too. Like, they're people. And like that, I think there's a disconnect there. Like, there's a wall, like, someone just preaching at you and you have to sit there and listen. But like, teachers have told me, like, I learn from my students all the time. And I think that some students don't realize that.
There, there's so many divides that are just really subtle. Like, if you think, for me, it's less so between myself and adults because I'm an only child and that's just sort of the way that I was raised. So it's very easy for me to talk to adults and express my feelings. But for some people, it's not. And there's a big disconnect between adolescents and adults. But there's also gender divides and things there that just people don't feel comfortable crossing and all sorts of things, like, I think this way, you think this way. I think this way, you think this way, therefore we can't get along. And I think the most important thing that I've gotten out of Think Tank is that everything's connected in just, in just a little way. Like, you'll walk, for me, I learn a lot from this class and then a lot from this class, but I learn even more walking between those classes because I'll reflect on what I learned in the past class and think about what I'm going to learn in the next class. And somehow, those ideas always come together. And then on the walk, I'm talking to people and I'm hearing what they have to say about this and about that. And I'm giving a speech in public speaking with Niels and with Paige about sort of truths and making the most of every experience. And I think that every opinion or every belief or every fact is a truth and it has its own weight. And if you are open enough to create these truths, to take other peoples, to expand on them, that's when you truly become your own person. And when you can have quality conversations with other people and feel confident sharing yourself while taking things from other people.
Like branching off of that, too. So like way back when, when Bunting showed that like documentary thing about that school?
Yeah.
And they were explaining like, yeah, and like the whole point of school when it was first created was basically just to make kids who could like work on assembly lines.
Work in a factory, yeah.
Work in a factory. So it really was just for training and how it hasn't changed since then. And then they brought up the fact that like, people are supposed, like, in sort of the work environment that we have today, people need to be individuals. So school needs to evolve to sort of teach people to be individuals. I think it's really important because we've, most, I want to say most of us in Think Tank or all of us in Think Tank have sort of figured out who we are as individuals through the conversations that we've had and sort of through our own education. And we've been able to make those connections. And I think, you know, the whole point of school should be that everyone can sort of make that connection and figure themselves out as an individual so that they can figure themselves out as a learner. Because when you kind of enter a freshman year, you might have that sort of like burning desire to, you know, something's not quite right, but like you found it kind of by going to Think Tank and then that was sparked for you. So being able to sort of find that for every individual. And like, you know, we've been able to figure that out, but how can you make it so that everyone is allowed to do that? And it's sort of like being able to just sort of put the learning in people's own hands and just not destroying what they have. Because like, as an adolescent, you're curious. Like, the whole way that people learn is from mimicry. That's what you've been doing your entire life. And then you sort of hit high school and like, your creativity is kind of just dying off because you have so much thrown at you to like fill that bucket. And it just like, but you have these ideals already of sort of like what you want to try, what you want to see, because you're still curious and there's like, you're more aware. So it's like, just being able to sort of kindle that fire and just let people sort of try what they want to and just kind of grow for themselves as an individual and then go from there.
I'm going to jump in. We only have about five or six minutes. And that is going to be doing much short shrift through our graduation standards, but I do want to just get a quick peek or have, or have you a quick peek at our graduation requirements and a policy, okay? So the green sheet is our current graduation requirements policy. And the white sheet represents a potential change to that. One thing I want to note is that when it says CSSU graduation standards, those standards reflect transferable skills. So I think it would go back to kind of what Niels is talking about, less about content and more about what are the, what are the deep skills that matter to us later in life. We can all take a couple of minutes to just look through the document.
The green is current.
Green is current, white is to be discussed. And the white sheet is paper.
Yeah, can I?
Can we go start?
Can I say why I initially laughed?
Yes.
Okay, well, at the bottom of our current one, it says, "Students entering the life program, an alternate learning program, must meet the requirement of twenty units of credit." And I was just like, aren't we all in the life program? My favorite quote. Is, "Education is not preparation for life, education is life itself." And it's like, oh, well, on earth, this is the life program.
I think if it's called life program, and if we're trying to base more around life program, you should have more life stuff in the credits. So this isn't life and there has to be a separate program if you want to be alive.
Yeah, you can be alive.
Okay, like a total side note, yeah, moving on. I like that in the new one versus the old one, the sciences aren't.
Yeah.
Because I managed somehow to completely avoid physics entirely, which kind of defeats the whole purpose. Like, in this one, they split it up so that you have to do all of these. And I skipped an entire concept and just because I did year-long camp, so I don't have to do it. Which is like already problematic and it's like, if I wanted to take it, I mean, I guess I could, but like, I don't know. I don't like that it gets sort of split up and you're forced to take certain classes that you have no interest in.
Yeah, that's like, I had to take geology.
Yeah, I'd say how many people here.
And I don't, I didn't retain anything from that. I just took it because I had to.
And it's complete memorization and I still, I don't know anything we did in the first unit and I'm just going to have to cram for finals.
It's like, you're not going to learn if you don't want to learn. So like, forcing someone to take a class isn't going to,
Also, why is it credit at a half for physical education, but it's not that it's like only a half a credit for like practical art or fine art? Like, personally, as an artist, that really insults me.
A lot of our kids are, not our kids, a lot of us are already doing so much physical exercise. And there's also a health credit, too. So that's like two credits of, this is how your body works, this is how much you should exercise, this is how much, here's your food triangle, pyramid, this is, yeah.
I don't question that at all. Of course there should be two, two full credits.
Of course there should be. Life team sports.
Is that necessary? Why can't you, why?
Well, I think that credit should still be physical, why can't you move it with practical and visual arts and what, like why can't you-
Is dance in LTS?
No.
Is that an art though?
What if you did dance club?
You can do dance and not LTS.
Right, like I did, uh, field hockey, I depended on LTS.
But there are for sure life teams sport, or life team skills that you can learn without playing a sport.
Yeah.
Kind of conversely, I mean, for people who aren't into art, I can kind of understand, because I've heard a lot of people just like-
Only two minutes left.
Slam talk intro, because it was like, I hate this class, I'm not an artist. So I can understand like only half a credit, but I literally hate everything about a gym class. Like, it makes me uncomfortable, it makes me anxious, I hate gym with a burning passion, and I have to take three years of it, like. I have to take freshman year, I have to take P-FIT, and I haven't taken LTS, I dropped out of it because I didn't feel comfortable, and I still have to take it senior year. Like, that's not acceptable for me.
Yeah, why, why doesn't, you know, like participating in a club count? Because you have a certain responsibility, you have to communicate, have to be independent as well.
Maybe even more so though, in a class, like, in a club, people are, wanna be there, you know, so I feel like you would do it more than if you were in a class.
Also, in gym, I feel like a lot of classes, you can definitely loophole your way through it. Once you learn how to kind of beat the system, you can get it through it. Just throwing it out there. You're welcome.
I agree.
Final thoughts about-
Probably, probably talk about the two things that are actually do-
Really good.
Yeah. Um, demonstrated proficiency. That's pretty cool, and the portfolio review.
Yeah, I like that.
I like that a lot.
Especially with even talking. The what one?
Can we talk about what we think that means, the portfolio?
Portfolio, I think that-
It's kind of like an exhibition of like what you have, which I think is really important. Like, I've, yeah, and I found a lot that like, especially again, being an artist, when you put your work out for people to look at and critique, like, and you know that's gonna be happening. You sort of put your all into it and you get really passionate about it.
Yeah.
And I think that that's someone you could definitely sort of apply to every subject in school. You know, like if you wanna make a giant history project in any form you want to, and you have to show it at the end, like.
That's big.
I do like that.
All right, last comment, who wants to wrap it up?
That's so much pressure.
At our leader.
Yes. About this or in general?
I think you do it in general, I'm sorry to give you such a short amount of time.
No, it's totally fine, yeah. Well, it's, it's been nice, we all do show to like a different audience, because we get a lot of ourselves on Tuesday mornings. But it's interesting to be able to present to people and know that our ideas are getting out there and finding a new community. And sparking something a little bit.
It's like our own exhibition.
Yeah, it's like our own exhibition, and it's been nice to be able for us to like, get out of the annex, which is what we've been trying to do with our thoughts, so. Yeah, I'm very proud of you guys, a lot, and I'm very thankful that I've found people like you guys, so. Glad we could all be here to show it, so.
Tay has been amazing too, she's like bringing her mama over there.
Thank you so much.
Do we wanna maybe do the CSSU debrief and wait until, uh, Adam comes back and does his principal report?
Can I mention something?
Sure.
So, everyone gets to see VU celebrations, and there was a note in there from the Heinsberg Police. I put that on our Shelburne front porch forum, because I thought everyone needs to know this. And I got many comments back directly to me, which were all positive and thank you for posting that, and that they had no idea that-
You mean the, at the, the letter from the Heins, the chief?
Yes, and I, I'm bringing it up here because I would think it'd be great if everyone got it out to their community. So I'm at Shelburne, but maybe Williston and Charlotte and Heinsberg can get it out.
Do we know if it's been shared with any other communities besides Shelburne?
I don't know.
It hasn't been in the Williston.
No, but I, I'd be happy to post it on the front porch.
Stated that they kept track of the high speeds, my son was very pleased to point out it was not a boy, that was the highest speed, it was actually a girl, he felt vindicated.
The baby wasn't at eighty-eight or ninety-nine.
I did, I did see that, it was a repeat. It was a repeat, which just once wasn't enough.
Okay, why don't we do the CSSU debrief, so we're not losing too much time here? Um, there wasn't much that came out, uh, let me look at my agenda. There was a couple of recognitions in the, in the COLT report, that's the central office leadership committee report.
Who's retired, never been here?
Eddie Craznow.
Yeah. And then there was a, uh, Act Forty-Six, um, report. And one of the things I do wanna show people is, because one of my concerns is that we haven't seen a whole lot of that, about it being advertised. And they have these flyers that they're, um, that are coming out, if you wanna take a look at it. It's pretty much the same information that's contained in your, in our packet. And they are have, I, I thought I hit the postcard too, I must have lost, oh, there it is, there it is. The postcard, they're gonna be sending postcards out to all the families. And, uh, I don't know if they go into all, just all the school families, or if they're going to everyone in the community.
Not everybody, everybody votes.
Okay.
They all need that information.
So those are going out, and then just be aware that there are, um, the, the vote is on June seventh. And then on June sixth, there's a, uh, public hearing meeting in each of the towns. And they are listed on the flyers of where they are going to be held in the various places. Please note, there's not one for CVU, so. In terms of me disseminating this information, it, it was just made available to me. But it's really the town folk that are gonna, each of the town folk that are gonna do it. And we, we as a board, a CVU board, are not really gonna get involved with the dissemination of this information. However, please look on the website, because if the, you could have these frequently asked questions asked to you in your local supermarket, or on the elevator, as they were saying. And there were some great responses by the people on the merge committee, um, the merger committee. They talked about stressing the flexibility of, of merging, meaning that the sharing of resources across town. The sharing of not only the physical resources, but also teacher resources. And the, the analogy could be, uh, the merger would look a lot like what we've done to special ed over the last, uh, year, a year and a half. That's like, how it's running out of central office, and does anyone really see a change in how special ed is being delivered? No, not really, but, you know, we have gained many efficiencies in centralizing the administration of special ed. Does anyone have any questions on that? That's about it. Can we do the principals' report next? Anything special in it?
Oh boy, I wrote it.
It's all special.
Yeah.
Next.
Uh, I think the one, I would point to the, uh, graduation standards document that's embedded in there, there's a little screenshot. So that's, it's not, probably not as pretty in your printout.
I can't read it.
It's okay, you don't have to read it, just have to see that it exists. And if interested, I can share, uh, the doc.
This, this, this thing here. There's no way I can read this.
All right, so that went over well.
It's a nice graphic, I like it.
We agree.
Graphics awesome, the graphics nice, okay. Uh, so I can, I will send that electronically. Just a note, a quick note about the PLC leadership team. So this, the delayed opening for CVU represents, uh, inability for us to, you know, and you've heard me talk about it this year. I think, lead and communicate much more effectively than we have in the past, when we're talking about professional development. And the list of leaders here for the next year, I'm, I'm absolutely thrilled about. Just in terms of the representation from the faculty, uh, the distribution of leadership, so it's not just an administrative team now. We're, we're really bringing the whole school into moving us forward. And, and talking about things like innovation and the discussions you saw tonight, so. Again, I couldn't be happier about that. And, uh, we, we spent some time this, uh, on May twelfth, doing a graduation challenge, uh, kind of reboot, as we were calling it. So, looking at ways in which we want to, uh, handle this project five years from now. So that it, it more represents a four-year experience. Maybe it shifts a little bit from this idea of this capstone common assessment thing that everyone goes through. To a, more of a, I think, a celebration of the educational journey. A, a deep dive into self-designed learning. And, uh, an ability to, to really help our seniors launch into the future. So that, uh, we're just more intentional about what that transition is beyond high school. In the interim, that, that, you know, we're taking some respectful steps for next year to start slowly shifting this project for, for five years from now. And, um, I can, you know, later days, show the specific changes. We're gonna be meeting with all juniors on the twenty-fifth to, to review some of, some of the changes, and I think they'll be very excited. And I think the faculty will be excited, uh, at large, so, I think.
Were there some specific problems?
Sure, I think if you look at the way, for instance, like the, the tri-search research papers are written now. What, what ends up happening is, research comes so late in a project, it ends up being a tack on at the end. And when we think about research, we want research to be something that guides one's experience. So for example, one small change is, we're gonna be doing the research before the project begins, uh, as much as we can in the future. So that, 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 the interviews, the research really expands one's thinking, as opposed to, I'm just gonna grab this to fit it into the paper. So that, you know, that's an example of a small change. Another change is we're moving away from anonymity. So in the past, all papers have been read in this, um, in a blind way. I don't think that leads to the ownership that we want from our students. And because we're, we're doing so much with standards right now, uh, across all the disciplines, over all the years, that capstone common assessment, we have to make sure this, we're gonna, we're gonna know hopefully where students are on the standards, that we wanna know well before, two months before students graduate, right? We often get this experience, like, oh man, this kid's really struggling with writing, well, it's two weeks until graduation. You know, so, we're, we're shifting away from, uh, this idea that this project has to be the gatekeeper of all these standards. And, and moving more towards, um, kind of this idea that, that this product is, uh, is about deep, deep reflection, I kinda lost where I was going with that.
If I can interject real quickly, I think for the longest time, Grad Challenge represented one of the only standards-based experiences. And, uh, it really acted as, uh, as a watermark for us. But now that those practices are far more prevalent, um, the role that Grad Challenge plays needs to shift.
And you, and you've heard me talk about this before. I hear students asking in many ways, though they don't know they're asking it, for us to carve out time from what we're doing. Actually, I heard someone say, I forget who said it, you have to find a way to ground things in yourself, I think one of the students said. So, Grad Challenge is a way of doing that. It's, it's a way of building that connective tissue between your disparate experiences of various classes and pulling together learning that surrounds you and your interests. That needs to happen, and you've heard me say it, all four years. So, that's really the, I mean, I think that's the evolution overall. Oh, other small changes, so again, it's about ownership, it's about you as the learner, it doesn't have to be just this blind read in this copy. So that, uh, for instance, we are gonna have a cohort experience in the fall, this was piloted, I think, last year, right Jeff?
I believe so.
Before I was here, where me, my seniors, will meet with four or five other people in my Grad Challenge reading group. So other advisors and their seniors, and we'll have mini-classes. And, and we will tune each other's projects and we'll work together, as opposed to being this very solo experience. So there'll be a little more scaffolding that way, I think a little more clarity of purpose and, and dates. But also more of a community experience, I think we'll get a better product. We traditionally have two reading days. One of the reading day, you know, th- those reading days, we read the papers, you, you know, you're, you're holding the standards, you're talking to each other. Students aren't even there. So, we're looking at next year having, the paper will be slightly shifted to a much more reflective, uh, approach towards Grad Challenge. And then students will come in with, and, and talk about their papers and do a mini-presentation with members of that reading group right there. You're not just gonna turn in, what, what we see sometimes with the papers these days, it's like a first draft that we're seeing, and people just meeting their requirements. If you know that you've gotta go meet with people and take ownership of what you've created, you're much more likely to put in, uh, an effort that's gonna be meaningful to you, and I think to the group at large. So, so small, so there's some other small changes, but nothing huge, just little shifts for next year.
Are there any questions for Adam?
I guess, has there been any conversation that Grad Challenge has little or no value any longer?
We had, the first part of the meeting, we spent looking at the purpose of Grad Challenge. And that sentiment was not shared, I, I, I think people see, it, it has little value when people see it as just a hoop. And so I think reinvigorating this idea of self-directed learning is really important, so it doesn't feel like a hoop.
Listening to these students, that's all I could think about, is how exciting it would be. With some new pieces to it, or some changes.
Yeah, sometimes, you know, things just seem to grow sometimes.
The vision that I've heard Adam share about how the role that PLPs and personalized learning will play in this, and it's almost like a defense of your, your right to graduate at the end, and using his body of evidence. And I think that Grad Challenge feeds into that really nicely. So I think there'll be a merging of those two things, based on the mission and vision I've heard explained here, mostly through Adam, so I, I think it's really exciting.
I've been a community panelist for about three years, and I've always enjoyed going and listening to the presentations. And it seems like all of the kids have learned something. And, I, you know, I've heard that the kids complain about Grad Challenge, but when I go and I watch them do the presentations, you know, I can't imagine that they would have complained about it earlier, because they really seem like they've learned a lot, and it's-
They get a real audience in that situation?
Yes.
I'll go back to, I mean, I will, it's appropriate that Andre's here. I remember I would vividly remember Andre sitting down with Sean McManus and myself about seven or eight years ago. And putting forth this idea, wouldn't it be amazing if Grad Challenge was a student talking, really in deeply talking about their educational experience, all the way from K to twelve, and it became this transformative, um, kind of educational moment for them. And, and so you've got this idea of the project there, but you've also got the idea of the project in the context of the person. And I think sometimes on a celebration day or the presentation day, we're missing a little bit, because we could have more of the person there. And I'm thinking about the, the power of community panelists, hearing about an educational journey, kids having, saying, okay, so the, what's next, what do you think, here's some advice I could give you. So it becomes less about, let's check off these standards, it becomes more about, let's have this powerful experience where we're sending our students into the world, even if symbolically.
I think it would be, as you look forward five years, I've only been a community panelist once, but I've been a community consultant four or five times. And I've had very mixed feelings about the role of a community consultant. My husband was a community consultant, and he will never do it again. And I look at who my twins had as their community consultants, and their experiences were night and day. And so that's kind of like a wild card piece, I think, to this whole, you could have somebody, a community consultant, who just signs stuff off. And you could have a community consultant that makes you write your paper five times, because even though it's been passed by supposedly the advisor, she doesn't think it's good enough. So, I think that's kind of a wild card piece, and it would be nice to see that role better defined. I would like to see less pressure put on the community consultant. The, the, the need to feel like they have to pass the kid, because if they don't, what does that mean? You know? So, I, that, I would just put in, maybe look at that piece as you evolve this.
And the one last little neat piece I put in there is, think about if we have a, an in-depth understanding of our students, and our students have an in-depth understanding of where they are in our big standards, transfer, you know, their big transferable skills. Why wouldn't we orient the projects around that? So around one's strength, maximizing one's strengths, mitigating one's challenges, and exploring interests. So we could have a much more intentional process of, I'm doing this project because I really needed to work in this area, because I wanna excel in this area. And this is what these classes have taught me about myself over these years, could be neat.
I think what you mentioned about creating some time structure in school, or more time structure in school for work on this, is a really positive, I'm, I'm glad- I'm glad to hear that change. I think it speaks to their passion for innovation. And I've heard students talk before about it feels like an add-on, like, "Oh, then I have to do Grad Challenge." And so if you're looking at, "I have to take all these classes, and I have to do Grad Challenge," but if it's part of your day, your schedule, your routine, because it really is an innovative project that allows them to innovate, but then it gives them the time and space to do it here. I think that's...
I was thinking about the way the project was organized before. A lot of kids might find their passion as a senior. And to me, it should be happening earlier. And so I think with PLPs coming in, that students should be able to start exploring where they think their passions are much earlier, and, and be able to test out some different things. Because then by the time they get to this culminating project, I mean, right now, they get, they do this, choose this project, and it's really about finishing something in a timeline. Some kids might get a lot of, I mean, many kids probably get a lot of value out of it, but would they have gone a different direction if they'd had opportunities to think about it over years, rather than in the, "Well, someone won't do it now." I think, I don't know, that's just something.
Maybe if they're early for sophomore, they'll have some kind of mini Grad Challenge preparation, taking the kind of experiences we have talked about, so that helps fine-tune them for what happens in their senior year.
There's a lot, there's so much that we can do, it's exciting.
Any more questions for Adam before we move on? We kind of already did a CSSU debrief while you were in the hall, I hope you don't mind.
Not at all, I'm okay.
Okay.
Can I ask one question? How did the school react to the Unified Sports Championship?
I was amazed by the student body turnout. I mean, it was, to have Patrick Jim that full of our students, that was one of the best things I've seen in my years of education.
Yeah, I was overwhelmed by the response. It was like walking into a regular playoff game during the winter. It was awesome. It was also great seeing how many faculty members were there, and who brought their families. And it reminds me of what else sports can do. It was a great experience. We're really proud of the people who've done all this work with these students.
My wife's a big basketball fan, and I forced her to go. She, I mean, she, she's played for years and years and years. She cried the entire game. She was like, "This is what it's supposed to be about." Neat.
Are there other sport opportunities besides basketball?
Yeah, you hear, I'm, I'm hearing actually some, I, I feel like every coach in the building is like, "Well, why not my sport?" I'm more worried about going.
Yeah, having enough athletes.
I know, they do, they do snow shoeing, and I think bocce ball.
Bocce.
And they bowl, they bowl.
I don't know where the competitions are, but...
The only, the only slightly sad thought I had in the whole process was, is making me think about our last board meeting, talking about equity, and thinking about how great it is that our students are so willing to step up for these unified athletes. But sometimes, when I look at some of the socioeconomic divides in the, in the school, we're less likely to be unified in those areas. And I think that's something that we need to explore next year as a board. Sorry to leave everyone down out there.
I think that's good to keep in front of us, actually.
Okay, let's move on to 5.3, the third quarter financial FMR. Now, I don't know if people got the final revision. I think that just came like a couple days ago. It came yesterday. But I'm, I'm gonna actually kind of pass over this, because we, as a group, have not met and reviewed this yet. And that's not gonna happen for a couple of weeks. So, maybe as a little business meeting, when we do our business meeting in June, maybe we'll go over this again. Because Bob Mason can't even meet with us for about two more weeks on this. And the same thing for this facilities committee. That, that's a combined committee, finance and facilities, and we haven't even met on this. And I don't think there's any point in talking about it, since people doesn't have the very latest copy, which came, like you said, yesterday. And we already covered the X46 report. I did that in the debrief. So, we're moving on to 5.6, the Student Council Report. And is there any other committee besides the ones that were listed here that needs to report out?
I'll just ask Adam, he and Sue got to speak about our end-of-year faculty meeting, when we do longevity awards.
Did we speak about it?
Yeah.
We did?
Okay. That's the only thing, we'll get that data.
Okay, yeah, we were planning for it.
Okay, you're up.
Okay. So, maybe what's been going on at CBU last, two Fridays ago, we had our first spring rally led by CBU Student Council. And it was a very successful event. We had a barbecue by the lacrosse games, the boys' lacrosse games, and then there was the girls' lacrosse game going on at the same time, and a baseball game. And originally, we had planned sport, team dances, but there was a last-minute change. But nonetheless, we had a great sort of field day, spring rally, that we hope to continue in the future. Coming up, we have Grad Challenge. We have Senior Service Day Thursday. And on Thursday, we also have kneecaps for the juniors, and the freshmen are doing their Model UN. We have a low turnout for seniors right now for Senior Service Day, which is very upsetting. Student Council's trying to get students to sign up. We brought computers out to the lunchroom today, but there's an unfortunate lack of people signing up. But we still have a good number of people. So that's something to look forward to next year's senior class, to really boost the numbers.
So, Lucy question, what were the projects that were...
So, groups that are going out, there's one to Catamount, Mad River Glen, Into Faith Gathering, Mount Philo, the CBU grounds. I think that's it. There could be one more. And so, each of those groups is 30 to 50 kids, with some, with one of them being 70 students.
Okay. And if they don't do senior service, what happens?
They either get called out, or they spend the day at school.
Okay.
They'll all be suspended. Didn't start spreading that rumor.
I will. And this morning, we had our student body president and vice president elections and their speeches. Alora is running for president, so, along with four other teams. And it was very great. They were all very impressive, so voting is happening right now. So that's exciting. This year, Model UN for the freshmen is changing. They are moving away from each student writing a resolution, giving a speech, and then voting on the resolution. They've moved forward to a summit. So they're given a topic, and I believe it is dealing with global poverty. And so, the first day, they all read their resolutions. And the second day, they break off into different groups and discuss and come up with plans. So it's a lot more critical thinking. I'm going to monitor the second day, and I'm very excited to see where the freshmen take the conversation.
Okay, and then, I think it was last week that we had the Mount Crash.
It was two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, yeah.
So, wow, that's weekly. So, we had the Mount Crash, and I think it really affected a lot of people this year with some of the recent events. I'm very close friends with some people who are personally connected with the recent student death. And our previous student death, he was an alumni at Endicott. And I think that the, the volunteers made a really good job of making it like a reality and showing us how much these things impact not just like one person, but a whole, a lot of people in the community. And so, I think that was really successful in reaching students. And then also, with the new, with the email you sent out recently about what the police report from Officer Cost talking about the new speeding regulations, they're really trying to crack down on students and discourage speeding, which I think is really good. And I, we've heard a lot of rumors about it in the student body. So people have taken notice of that, and I think it's going to be effective. So, this Saturday was also prom, and that was really fun. That was held at Higher Ground this year. And there was a mad dash to Al's after. That was pretty exciting. And also, the Unified Sports Basketball Team, there's been a lot of support for that in the school. And I think that's really great to see how much the students are supporting each other. And on another positive note, AP testing is over. I know I'm very excited, and everyone else is very relieved that that's done with. And so now we also, now just the juniors have to get through kneecaps, and then they'll be done.
They're all new to us. They're still wearing their ugly hat.
And I just wanna say, this is my last meeting. I wanna say thank you so much for the past two years. It's been a really great experience. And I've learned a lot. I've learned how to, how a board works, and that's very exciting, especially where I want to go in the future. I, I love the monthly meetings, and I love all the discussion. Like, I never knew about Think Tank. And I see Adam and the school board leading CBU into a very positive place in the future. And I'm just so excited to see where it goes for all the students here. So thank you to everyone.
Is that it from Student Council?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We're going on to Discussion Matters. Specifically, 6.1, Policy. We had a review of five policies this time around. Does anyone have any feedback for Lorna to take back to the policy committee?
Basically, the search and seizure is being reviewed by legal counsel. And then when they finish reviewing it, it'll come back to us to...
I'll see if there's a, yeah, yeah. And that's those first two.
And I had one question on, on F4, on search and seizure. You know, there's a lot of, and I can understand why legal's reviewing it, but who documents, you know, and I wrote this under Section B, like, who documents the searches, and who's doing them, and what, what the reasonableness is, et cetera, et cetera? I'm sure there's gotta be some type of, but it's not really clear about who owns that through this. I mean, the other things are, you know, a teacher, or this gender, or administrator, but when you get into the whole documentation and such...
It might be because it's an SU policy. I know at the high school, it has to be an administrator. But for instance, in a high scho, I mean, in a K8s, I think there are some designated employees who can do searches who are not administrators. So that might be why there's not that level of specificity.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious, because, you know, it just says, you know, law, policy, et cetera. But I would think that there would, that would have to be documented and put somewhere. So, when I was reading this...
So, which is, who's gonna sort of write up a report about this particular incident?
Or even going into it, because you have to determine what law or what policy. So, I mean, somewhere, someone has to own that documentation and sign off on it, or say to the administration. So to me, reading through this, I mean, I understand this, but to me, the, the whole notion of documentation and ownership was missing.
Do you now currently document, like...
And I'm sure someone does. It's just, it's not called out for in here. And I would think, given some of the specificity to some of the, you know, to the law, and to this and to that, that it would be documented a little bit clearer, a little bit more succinctly through the language.
But also, these are the policies. Aren't there procedures on each of these, then? And maybe because it's in the procedures, that's what I was wondering about. Because you're right, you could have a set form that you fill in behind, you fill in the person, the date, all those things. So I don't know if it's in that situation.
Yeah, I, I don't know. Because in some things, rules are called out for, and other ones, there's not. But the documentation seems a little, a little vague through it. Just a comment.
Cindy was saying before that the SCSSU one, because some people were asking about the bodily search in particular, and she basically said, "If it comes to that, no one in the school pretty much is doing it. That's getting bumped up to the police at that point."
Right, and that, that ownership and that documentation would be with, you know, and that's pretty defined, right? Because of the legality. I was just, as I was reading through this, that was the one comment that I had, is the documentation seems a bit...
Well, I'll just speak from a, from a procedural standpoint. It's certainly not, I mean, there's plenty of documentation that happens both within our MMS student management system. And, you know, anytime you're, you're doing a search, you're communicating home, and...
I'm sure it's somewhere, I just don't know where. So maybe this links to policy, like you said, or procedure, or reference that, that needs to be referenced.
And we can pass that on to Cindy and have the committee
Or have legal...
Take a quick look at that.
Look at it.
My sense is it probably does belong in procedures, but I'll, I'll loop back and check on that.
I was asked a question about policy by a neighbor. It's kind of applicable here. But if a student is involved in a off-campus weekend event, a party, why does the school get involved? And is there a policy that covers them? And I could not point to it, but since it's interrogation of students by school personnel, when does that start to apply? Because I could not answer the question.
Typically, that's gonna be our co, I mean, that would be our co-curricular policy. So, if the board feels like they don't want to have that anymore, that would certainly take a lot of work off our board's hands, I'll tell you that much. But I think it was the values of the community that those who are doing co-curriculars are held to a standard that, you know, when they're representing the school and invest in the community, that they're held to that standard of... that higher standard. And it certainly does, you know, get tricky when you get, when you have students that...
It sounded tricky.
At a party, and, you know, whether students are attempting to leave, or are they present about? I mean, it just, it gets tricky, and I think you do the best you can and communicate that with people. But you do have to have some level of standard there, because you start listening to individual stories, and it is easy to be compelled to act in a, in a certain way.
Jeff, didn't we have an incident a few years ago that, well, it was an off-campus party that... And the ramifications, the long and short of it is, is the kids who were involved just couldn't participate in sports anymore, or got suspended. I mean, we can't control everything, but then there was, was there a social media piece to that, too?
There's always a social media piece.
Because they were posting it on social media, and then it got all into the school, and... It's just like, I remember a parent coming here, like, "Why are the kids having, being killed on the roads? Are we, you know, what are we doing about it?"
I think it gets tricky when, you know, if there's a party, and then the kids who are involved in the extracurriculars are held to a different standard than the kids who aren't, but they're all students here at CBU. We, it's almost like we have a double standard. But that doesn't seem right. But I don't, you know, at what point does the school stop their role?
Right, but they have, but they agree to it as part of the teamwork.
Right, for extracur, I agree with that.
For extracurricular, they willingly say that, yea, verily.
I do have one question about the search and seizure by non-school personnel. What if there was a party, and it was raided by police, and they, they did arrest some of our students? But does that procedure then come into place, or no? If it's, if it's like on the weekend and not on school property, I don't, it's a law enforcement issue.
No, again, the only time we would get involved is if it's co-curricular.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on these policies for Lorna? Bring back feedback for committee, and also, Adam, you're on that committee, too, aren't you? Okay, none other than let's go on to 6.2, graduation requirements. And I'm assuming this is you, Adam?
This is me.
Does it involve these two pieces of paper?
It involves the green and white piece of paper. So as I'm sure you're familiar with, the legislation around Act 77 requires that we react to the need to graduate students based on proficiencies. And that changes our graduation requirement policy. So several of us have taken a stab at revising our graduation requirement policy. And we have the current draft in green, and a revised draft, or I'm sorry, the current policy in green, and a revised policy in white. The groups that have looked at this so far, the leadership group, certainly CSSU and Jeff, our program council, curriculum clearinghouse...
Students are on both of those, both of those committees, but obviously you've heard some of the reaction tonight, though not, not quite at the depth that we may have wanted due to time. And so, I mean, I think I'm, I'm putting this out to, to hear your questions, to see your reaction to, to changes to our graduation policy. A couple of things I, I might point out before you start. We're talking about the class of twenty twenty on the, on the white sheet, so keep that in mind. We are talking about our CSSU graduation standards, so those would have been reflected on the, uh, in the principal's report if you could have seen them. And I can, I can certainly, if you want to see them, bring them up on the overhead if that's useful. And you'll see elements in here about the personalized learning process and then, uh, the, uh, significant change being around the portfolio review. But I don't want to say a whole lot and, and take your thinking necessarily. So, I'd like to just hear your reaction and see if I can... Should we take?
Can you, I know you don't want to talk too much, but can you just explain that students may also present evidence that they need continued instructional opportunities beyond? Does that mean we're offering high school beyond four years or...
I mean, that, that is a line that I think has surprised a few people. And that, there are times when we have students who complete their credits currently and students saying, I feel like I'm not ready, I need more. And on occasion, you're saying, guess what, you are ready. I don't think you're ready or not, and you're moving on because you've completed these credits. So, I think the idea around proficiency, I think we often think about it, well, maybe this is about that junior who really feels ready to move on to college and, but hasn't finished his credits yet and is frustrated, but, you know, has this incredible, uh, skill and, and knowledge and, and is ready to go, but can't because of the system. Sometimes we forget that this is also about ensuring that all of our students are ready to transition out of high school and giving that flexibility.
I sort of liken the old ones that they have a, have to take a, a broader set of courses in science. They have to have, you know, bio and environmental and physical, but some other one. Whereas the new ones, it's three credits in science. And they don't get the, the broader field, the broader spectrum of...
I'm sort of wondering if it's better if I just take notes right now or respond to each point? I'm not sure.
Uh, I don't know.
If you don't mind jumping in, I, because I was part of the science redesign for quite a while. Those are now embedded in year one and year two of science. So, rather than standalone courses around these particular topics, they're now embedded because that's what next-gen science standards ask for.
So, they have to take freshman and sophomore science?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Taking the same number of credits. I, and I was wondering if you felt hamstrung writing that same list of credits down? As I did, reading it.
I can speak a little to that too, just because I've been talking to a lot of other districts. The challenge here is we need a policy for the class of twenty twenty and beyond. And then the other classes are still going to be living by the old policy. So, you'll have two policies running simultaneously there. And my sense is we need a transition from a system that we really know well to one that has fidelity. And we can't do that until we have some time to really ask the right questions, experience some of this. I think that by the time the class of twenty twenty comes to prove here, you might see a very different text here. Very different text. But for right now, the challenge really is, what if I demonstrated on the ninth grade? And I demonstrated all your pretty little leaves that you can't see right now on the... And so, we have said, you must demonstrate this in this many content area experiences. And that's what this is representing now because we really have our time to finding what that is until we've got the, had the experience.
One note, uh, then to that would be, still have that, that ethic of it's, it's important to have, be, have students be, experience that which they may not know. And, um, so we're trying to find that balance and it's a difficult balance to strike.
The kids got there on their own in a really interesting way tonight because I noticed most of them were juniors and they were, oh, there's these connections now between what's happening and what I read in literature and history. And, and part of that, I was quickly taking notes, is it's a, you know, evolution of where they are in their educational career and the courses they've had and the broad exposure that now it does start to, you know, in that eleventh and twelfth grade year, those intersections start to happen more naturally.
This is somewhat of a request to put things off. I feel like looking at the grad, graduation requirements is a really important thing to do carefully. And I'm, I'm, I wasn't, you know, I didn't have this in front of me when I read the agenda today. And I did, I thought, maybe it's something we could spend the time in the retreat?
Yes.
Talking about that and really focus in on it because I, I feel...
That is one of the major plans for the retreat. So, this is, tonight is getting a first glimpse and then...
Can I, in these could be things then that can answer at a later date, but other, um, things to discuss? How and where do students demonstrate proficiency in those standards? Like, what is that process going to look like? Is it certain standards in certain disciplines? Does it all happen senior year? How much of it's in grad challenge? Like, what is that? How calibrated is the faculty and what proficiency is, what, that whole process, which is enormous?
One thing the state's been really clear about is that if you are going to stick with a credit system like is proposed here, uh, the credits have to clearly show which graduation standards are attached... To each course. And you must demonstrate proficiency in each of those to earn credit for the course. So, that answers a little bit of your question.
And then I guess the secondary would be, what happens if a kid doesn't meet proficiency? Like, can you pass a course? Can you do the work? Can you pass a course if you don't meet proficiency? Because you still have the credit theoretically. And the other question would be around the process here of, um, like, parent and community engagement if we're talking about redefining. And I know it's not just coming organically, like, this is coming out of state policy too, to redefine graduation standards. But what the process has been or may be in involving parents in, um, in such a big topic?
Is that a question on language arts? Is that foreign language, English?
English.
That's English. Okay.
Is, well, is there a requirement for foreign language?
There is not. I think people often think there is because of college requirements, but it's not a school requirement.
Is there any precedent to trade physical ed if you're on a defined list of sports or club?
There currently is a way to earn credit for that. There are still some mandatory requirements, but you can replace, uh, white team sports, for instance, with participation in a sport.
You have a second...
Or an active reflection.
Can you trade it for a science?
Can't trade it for science.
No, not, I'm not, I'm not saying take the science, take another science. So, you're not taking a phys ed course, you're taking a, another, not a free block, but a, another course. You can't do...
Is there any flexibility in the arts requirement around similar? So, if a student is doing a production at the Flynn, you know, and involved in a, you know, substantial art endeavor, would they would get credit for that instead of a course?
See, that's the place where I think, that's, yeah, that's the place where I hope would we get to because, so it's not this list or it's a whole menu of stuff.
And this little paragraph where I will load the list of the classes, that speaks to Nexus and the alternative pathways and the potential for what you're talking about right now.
Do you think these kids did not know what life program is?
Yes.
Yes.
So, that is surprising to me and...
And it speaks to the equity issue.
It really speaks to the equity issue and, and, and it was kind of interesting because they looked at it as logically, they're like, well, this is kind of ridiculous. Life isn't school life, you know, and, and so it just, it creates, I mean, yeah, brings up some interesting points to think about.
It does.
Yeah.
I, I was uncomfortable during that.
Oh, me too.
And I knew, I knew there was nothing, uh, no malice or, you know, it was just a lack of knowledge.
A lack of knowledge was surprising.
I noticed that.
And in social studies, I see US history isn't called out. Is there a reason why?
I think similar to what we're seeing with, with the sciences, that, you know, we're hoping, one, that's embedded, but two, uh, I'll tell you, one of the more painful experiences as a, as a high school principal, current, the previous state departments around US history for all students is to have a student say who's, uh, is deeply involved in the tech program and we're saying, you know, you need to come back to CVU and you need to do this, you need to pass this US history course. And learning oftentimes is done in a way that doesn't necessarily suit your needs. And that's part of the reason why you've chosen this pathway. So, it's, uh, I'm glad to not see it there, but again, there is kind of this, I think with the transferable, um, the kind of the graduation standard around citizenship, um, I'm, I'm hoping that we're going to be approaching, uh, that, that the need to understand kind of how our country works in a different way.
You're doing it to repeat if you don't understand history.
And you're doing it not to understand it if you're forced to learn, I mean, that's normal.
Has everyone given whatever feedback they need to Adam about the graduation standards?
I just have one, one comment and, and you had, you had said, Erin brought it up to me. And that's, I love this direction. I think some of the questions will get asked like we did with grad challenge. How do we talk about and fill in the blanks for colleges and universities? I mean, I know our workforce wants students, people, workers who can make decisions, who can problem solve. But how, I think colleges are behind some of our innovation. So, if you're talking about, they know what a English class is and check it off and what's your grade. But I think we just need to, to think that that's going to be a question some folks will ask.
Yeah, in terms of Jeff's actually done a lot of thinking about what a transcript would look like and has come up with some models that I think...
Yeah.
Get a, a nice blend of, of what we're talking about. So, that's something we can, we can share.
So, another thing listening to the Think Tank, I think, was they were talking a lot about being involved in a lot of the decision-making and like, with the standards-based learning, maybe it's more of it had come from them and being involved. Maybe would it have come about differently? How much are students involved in this?
In this process?
What you're asking them?
Those who are on committees weighed in just as faculty members would.
Okay. So, there were kids, students involved?
Our program council's spent a lot of time on the, the draft that you'll see in the leaves and there are students on that.
I'm not sure student council probably hasn't went through this yet.
I think they did last year, they did. Didn't our program council rep go back to student council with it?
Yes, yeah, they showed, they showed us the leaf.
Yep.
Okay. Can we move, move on to seven point zero, action matters? Before we do seven point one, I want to make sure, did every, anyone, did everyone see the bid that went out to, for the paving that was sent out?
Couple of days ago.
Couple of days ago. Does the board feel comfortable in, in, uh, just having this discussion without, um, having seen the bid?
I'm a little bit put off by...
It is May seventeenth. And having not seen the bid, having not really had a chance to discuss it at all, um, that we are, we either need to vote on it or reject it at this point. And we're not meeting again until...
Well, we can, I can have everyone, uh, get the bid and we can vote on it at the retreat, which is May twenty-sixth.
What about the time?
I, I believe so.
I would check with Bob. Some of the construction things are very, very crucial. And I don't know what the vetting process was. I mean, there's a, there's a procedure that happens with bids that are above a certain amount. So, to delay something and foul up construction season is one thing to, to consider.
That's what Joan said, is that we may have a narrow window, that if we don't approve it this week, then we're done.
It does say on here, note to the board that they're meeting on site Monday for a pre-award walk for details.
Oh, yeah, they are. Didn't see that. But that's a pre-award walk. And they might have met yesterday. I have a question, procedural question, and maybe Jeff would know. Can we vote on this via email?
Oh, I don't think so.
No, I don't believe we can.
Have you had a history of rejecting a lot of bids?
No.
No. I mean, it's the lowest bid. It's not in an email on Sunday or something.
I can tell you that there's a really strict procurement protocol that's been followed, that has to be followed, so...
I think, I mean, my sense is that probably it sounds like the process isn't great, but I have a lot of basis.
I do too. It's, looks like they secured five bids. And the lowest bid was ST paving at two hundred and ninety thousand. And, and to me, I know that that bond went out for five forty. So, uh, and I don't think that was all the, um, paving. It had something to do with some of the windows too, but I think that's a pretty low bid.
Are the bids, um, did any of the companies come with guarantees though? I mean, a lot of pavers will guarantee their work, we're getting our road paved and they'll guarantee their work for a year. So, even though they weren't the lowest, we actually went with them because they guaranteed their work for a year. And if there are problems, they come and fix it.
Okay. I don't know that answer.
Let me text Bob and see if he's in the building.
I think they usually write out a, a list of specifications.
There was a spec attached after this. I didn't print it out because, a, a map.
Yeah.
It's kind of like the leaves, couldn't really get...
Yes, that map.
Yeah, you know it's a map, but you're not quite sure.
That's the only question I would have. I mean, I'm...
And my, my understanding is the engineer showed them, that map to all of the bidders.
Right, she's talking about Karen. But, but did, is the work... If the guy who comes in second guarantees his work and the lowest guy doesn't guarantee his work, I'd be more willing to go with somebody who guaranteed his work. I, I just depression.
Do you have access to what the spec is, that references a spec, do they, they go, would have gone out with the request for proposal?
No.
So, we don't know if that included a one-year guarantee or eighteen months or anything like that?
If that's Bob to come by, if you want to move to me, I'll ask him to come back to it if he's available.
Can I also ask that when information goes out for the board, that all goes out in one package or one email? Because it's...
I think usually...
We do and it's been very unusual that we, um, are getting stuff...
That late.
And we did last month too, there were a couple of things that came...
And for me, I'm frustrated that they're working on a Sunday to get us stuff.
I am too, right.
You know, and, and that's how dedicated, so, yeah, we got it late and I opened some of it and didn't open some. So, you know, both sides there are tough.
I have no reason not to trust Kurt, but at the same time, I, I hate to go into this blind.
Do we want to just, uh, move on to seven point two, the NEASC accreditation? Do we, we had this discussion last time. Do I have a motion to, uh, vote to drop the NEASC accreditation?
I do have one piece of information that Kathy asked for and that was the educational quality review plan by the state. So, it's a one, a one danger if people want it.
Okay. Thank you.
That's so awesome that you're here.
We just have a quick NEASC for us to get through and then we'll...
Are we doing... Yeah, we're, we're going to do NEASC first and then, okay, so, do I have a motion to vote... to drop NEASK?
I'm sure you want to do that.
No, that's fine. Go ahead and do it. I'll work for you.
Do I have a second?
Can we just amend that to say, to drop NEASK and replace with the Educational Quality Reviews? I don't think it looks good for the board to say we're dropping NEASK and not replacing it with something.
Okay.
And I would, I would say not renew NEASK, we're not dropping it.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, so let me restate this, or do I have to table it and then do something else? Can I just restate the motion?
I'll withdraw my second or whatever.
Okay.
Make a friendly amendment, and then we'll-
Can I make a friendly amendment to, okay, where am I? To, what was your word?
Not renew.
Not renew the NEASK accreditation and replace it with the Educational Quality Reviews that was put out by the Vermont Agency of Education. Second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? No discussion? All those in favor of not renewing NEASK?
I'm still reading.
Huh? Oh, you're still reading? Okay, sorry, Kathy.
So in the Educational Quality Review, it says there's an annual snapshot review?
Mm-hmm.
And who does that? And what does that entail?
They're working on the details of that, but right now, it's, it looks like it's going to be a competent bond leadership team within the school to respond to certain indicators.
So it'd be, I'm not sure, I don't know if the board's involved with global best practice, the global best practice.
Yeah, no, I don't think so.
We're going to self-assess it.
Yeah, it's a bit of a self-assessment.
Kind of less burdensome than the self-study review process.
Yes. And the EQR's will be every three years, I believe, and so their frequency is better.
And then they say they use math and English scores. What scores are those?
What paragraph do you have?
Top of second page. Top of second page, here.
There must be a score.
Yeah, I don't know, but there are, I don't know which, there's so many math and English scores out there.
The nice thing about Educational Quality Review teams, that you're looking at lots of data as opposed to really the narrow measurements, so I think you'd be looking at, hopefully, Sback results, you'd be looking, you know, the Science and Ecap results as well, whenever those are worth.
So those would be your standardized testing.
It's the state's way of saying that we're still going to use the same standardized indicators we've used in the past, but now they will be part of a much larger, more complete picture.
Did we lose Bob?
He left.
I told him what the subject was, and so I think he felt he needed some more information in order to be able to respond to that.
So we're just going to get some information, okay.
So, and we had already found out that there were no downsides to this in terms of higher end and all the other stuff. We had talked about that before, right?
Though it's interesting with what's happening in Burlington, how they're actually using, that was an interesting quote.
When we looked into this, there were a lot of people I called, and they said, "We're going to keep them because we need leverage."
Yeah, I mean, that's why we have accreditation in CVU.
That's exactly what they said.
Sorry, Jeff?
They said, "We're going to keep them because we need leverage with our community for school improvements."
And one of the things we discussed, I think in our other meeting, was that you could always go back to it. It's not like just because you're not renewing for next year, you can't use it again, because it's, as strange as it may seem, maybe someday you need leverage.
They'd be more happy to take, you know.
So, I know it doesn't seem that way now, but you just never know.
You're absolutely right. It sounds like their process, though, is going to be this integrated field review is sort of a, like, mini NEASKs, is it a process, kind of a?
And it's more frequent.
It's more frequent.
We actually designed our own internal NEASK a few years ago through the Curriculum Clearinghouse Committee, where we were doing it by department, and you were doing a self-study, and it was, it was fun. I mean, there's no reason to say why you couldn't design one of these for yourself and invite educators from out of the state, equally, you know, fingers, your respect.
So have you seen one of the reports from the AOE on this? Because it says they issue a report annually.
I think it's just starting.
It's just a pilot program.
Oh, this is the pilot?
It's a pilot, you're only at this point.
I've talked to principals who schools went through it, and they were very positive.
Okay. Thanks.
She's still reading.
I'm done.
You don't? Does anyone have any other discussion on this? Okay. All those in favor of not renewing NEASK, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it? Should we wait for Bob?
Keep going.
Okay, 7.3. We are going to be talking about the personnel. Mostly, I think, your interest is the leave of absence, okay?
Yeah, I just was curious what the, I'm assuming they're half-time teaching, half-time coaches now. So this is just taking the half-time coaching out of the CVU budget, putting it into the CSSU budget. Will they be doing any teaching at CVU?
Not the coaching piece, it's the, it's the teaching piece that's, they're becoming basically full-time coaches, half at CVU and half at CSSU.
Okay, so could I first have a motion to, to approve the personnel of 8.5.1 through 8.5.5? Do I have a motion to?
Did that include, that included everything, the whelms?
It'll be whole.
Yeah, it'll be, we're going to have to, we're going to have to approve the whole thing.
So we have to put it up.
And then we'll have a discussion. So do I have a motion to accept it? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second? Okay, a discussion, we were having it, which was-
So maybe you can just explain what the, what the leave of absence is doing to those positions.
For the positions, for those who have accepted positions, so we as a school don't lose the capacity of the teaching, but nor do we lose the coaching. So other people pick up the section that those coaches were teaching previously. CSSU, and Jeff can probably speak to this better than I can, assumes their coaching responsibilities and, you know, obviously the salary around those coaching responsibilities for this year coming up in order to support the district's move to a standards-based reporting.
And those are grant funded, so if I was not-
So we still get their services, but we don't have to pay for them?
Correct. We have the same level of service.
But we're paying for half or half?
You're paying for them to be .50 coaches at CVU.
Right, that's what you'd be paying.
Which is what they, you already were paying, but you were also paying for .5 teaching.
CSSU said that this, that's what you're paying for the other half.
Right, and so these people are then going to be working as coaches throughout the elementary, the community schools. Throughout the district.
Half-time, and half-time here.
Right.
For one year at this point.
One year, one year.
And those, that the leave of absence from their teaching is totally absorbed within the teaching staff already?
Potentially, there was a, I mean, as you're aware of in any, in a negotiated agreement, in any sort of a rift situation, someone would, if you're working a self-study, someone would have the ability to figure that out, and then we'd have to, you know, we have to hire out.
So it creates-
The funds are already there.
It creates 3.5 teaching openings?
Correct. They're already there, they're already funded, it's just you have to fill those teaching sections.
Yeah, then who's going to do that teaching? It has to be filled.
Right, figure that out.
So we may or may not see a savings.
You will not see a savings.
Depending on whom you hired to fill these people's roles.
Oh.
You will not see a significant.
Correct.
So there isn't capacity within our current teachers to absorb their teaching positions?
And we definitely need these sections, yeah.
Okay.
Can we have a question?
Kathy, you look like you have questions.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out why, why.
Are you wanting to do that, is that it?
You talked about it in budget season, about CSSU taking ours, and I thought it would be a great way for CSSU, for CVU to make money, right? We could hire out, they could pay us to take our teachers, but it's not looking that way.
Good try.
I know. Oh, it's all one pot of money anyways, right?
This is what they want to do, so they need experience. I mean, the district needs it.
Yes, I can see doing a little bit. These are grant-funded positions. Every year, we receive Title II A grant money to spend on school improvement and professional development, and right now, we spend it on a full-time science coach for the district, part-time math coach, math best practice studios. A lot of that's coming off the books, and the needs right now are, you need to move to a proficiency-based system. The middle school and high school have made the conversion to fully implemented standards-based reporting, and so we need some significant supports that don't currently exist. And that's why these two positions were created. That's why we're asking that you grant the leave for these folks to be able to do that.
It also benefits us in a long run, because if they're going to the, our feeder schools to start working with these kids now, they're going to have those relationships for when they're here, so.
And that's kind of whole consolidations.
Burger, go.
People love it, they get it.
So what's the plan to backfill, and when?
We'd be, we're hiring, and we do, I mean, you know, we're in that process.
These would be half-time positions, one year, ten?
One year. So they're not, they'd be one-year positions?
Correct.
And you're hiring specific-
I will tell you that there are, the anticipated openings pending board approval are being posted internally, as we have several highly, I think, talented folks on staff who are in part-time positions. So there's an opportunity there to expand what someone, you know, someone who's already here and who's doing an excellent job.
Are there any more questions about the request for leave of absence, or wellness teacher, or the Spanish teacher?
So I know that the wellness teacher, she looks great. I have a question about the Spanish.
Why do you feel that way?
About the wellness teacher or about the Spanish teacher?
Well, I mean, well, they're both great, but-
Okay, because when I, for the Spanish teacher, I don't have a CV coming from her, and it just says she just also knows French, and that's all I have for information. I'm like, there must be more to her.
So Genevieve is employed by us now, has done a phenomenal job this year, so it's another one of those situations where all the records are on file.
Thank you.
And you approved her last year, yeah.
I had a quick question about that one, too. Filling you in a position for Spanish, but then you make the comment that she's fluent in French. Was that where the, and French?
Yeah, it's a dual, there are several language teachers do both English and Spanish.
Nice, okay.
Hopefully, English.
Yes, a little bit of English.
Can you tell I've been here 14 hours?
We're going to try to get that.
No, that wasn't a complaint, I was just saying, it's a little tongue-bellied.
Okay.
I wonder a little bit, I've been involved in a few other school districts, mostly as employees, and everything I know about them is they wouldn't touch, wouldn't even consider hiring you if you had more than five years' experience. And I'm a little surprised that we, we, and I'm sure this is prob, I'm sure this is the best candidate available, that we're hiring somebody with 20 years' experience. And I can tell you that we cannot even take that into consideration when we do the hiring. Really? Not, not by age, but rather the fact that it's mucho dinero, moicaro. Yeah, I mean, we have to, we have to vet the best candidates and recommend the best candidates. You could say, no, we'd like you to go back and revisit, but the process is such that we certainly could not discriminate against me because I walked in there with 20 years' experience. Says who? I would defer to Cindy, but I know I had a conversation with exactly that, about that topic with her last year. I will talk to Cindy when I see her. She affirmed that position.
Are we finished our, with our discussions on these personnel? Can I have a vote to approve the three leave of absences, the one wellness teacher and the one Spanish teacher? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it? No? Okay, Bob.
Yes, Paulie.
We're going back to 7.1, the ABM award contract. I got it, but some other people did not get the contract, and I have to.
Here, go back.
So before we begin our discussion, do I have a motion to award the paving contract, ending our discussion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Could I just clarify what they have? The sheet was in your agenda.
You said you'd send later.
Your agenda, yeah. Either Saturday or Sunday.
I was on the weekend.
It's the sixth and seventh day of the work week.
That's right. But the question was about whether the work is guaranteed or not.
Guaranteed, I might not use as a word. Warranty of quality of work, I might. Just so you're aware, Kurt, Kurt and I don't do these things lightly. We don't do a little sketch on the back of an envelope and hand it to five bidders and say we want it repaved. He has been working with Kevin Worden with Engineering Ventures for probably three or four weeks to develop both a detailed set of drawings and detailed specs that clearly outline what we want done on the ground, both to prepare the pavement and then to finish the work. And it carries a workmanship warranty for one year. Each bidder has that same outline of scope, specifications, and expectations, and that's what they do use. So we're not selecting the bottom quality or the top quality, we're accepting the low bid of those who said they would meet our specifications.
Which includes warranty of their work for a year, so that's, and all of them said that?
Yes.
Okay.
Did any offer a greater warranty period?
No, of the, of the five bidders, none offered change like that. One bidder couldn't meet our requirements for a performance plan, which sometimes happens with local contractors. The others didn't have specifications.
And you have a history with all the bidders?
I personally don't, but yes, someone in the pool of us three has an extensive knowledge of experience with each of them, and in fact, Kurt and Kevin brought the desired bidder onsite Monday, in time for us to make sure we were comfortable with the recommendation due tonight to go over the specification in detail and make sure they aren't going to be disappointed or surprised middle of summer. So they're pretty comfortable saying we've got the right contractor.
When would it start? Do you know, is that part of it?
They've been notified that they can begin to bring equipment onsite after Friday the 10th, and then they, they need to keep their equipment out of the way, adults from the 10th to about Wednesday the following week. I'm like, that's so far. And then after Friday, Friday of that following week, they can bring everything they want onsite to get it done. Same with the window guy. And they can't trip off pretty shut. It's going to be a busy summer.
Bob, I just have one question, because we went up for the bond for, what, $540? And how much was the lot before the paving and all the other, didn't we also allot some for the windows?
Yes, I'm not sure. Were within the money that you had allocated either prior funding or in the art?
So this is $350,000.
Okay, so we're within budget. I think we're probably $30,000 lower than, than all of that, but I don't have those numbers right in front of me.
I just want to know if one is involved in construction.
You're a woman after my own heart.
I haven't, we haven't even started yet, and you want to know how much is left.
Because you got to find another project.
It's bigger than a dollar, and it's less than $100.
So, we're just talking the paving right now, we're not talking windows, right?
Does anyone have any more questions for Bob before we take a vote on awarding ST paving for doing the...
Parking lot.
Parking lot, sorry. I love that word there, for $290,000. $290,000.
So, moved.
No, we're voting. So, all those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. Good luck, everyone. Enjoy the rest of your week.
Have a safe trip.
And the last part of our agenda is just the consent agenda, which we don't discuss, we just approve, and so we are approving 8.1, 8.2, 8.3, and 8.4, and 8.6. And we all got the bid for the windows in our package, and everyone saw that bid. So, all those in favor of casting consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. I'm just going to confirm our next meeting dates. For those of you on the CVU board, we are having our retreat on May 26 at 8:00 a.m. to 1:00. For those of you who are also on the CSSU board, it's going to be a long day. That will go from 8:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon. And then, we are having our final business meeting June 21 at 5:30 in this room.
5:30.
That's a 20 minutes. My one last question on the business meeting is, usually the board gives you the power of acting for the whole of the summer, does that happen?
We just gave it to you.
You don't remember?
Any summer hire, let's say something happens, and instead of having to get the board together, which is difficult in the summer, they give you authority, they get the information, we affirm it.
Polly, we trust you.
No, 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 your, this board is the board, but regardless of how.
And then graduation.
Good night, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, Polly.
Graduation. Graduation.